We have an open meeting for February 10th, 6 o'clock. Members present are Mike King and myself, Mike Baptiste.
Richard Swanson.
And Ken.
Ken Buckland.
Buckland and Charlie Rowley, town engineer. First order of business, minutes, we don't have any.
We don't have minutes.
Nope.
No minutes, unfortunately.
Second order of business, A and R for Charlotte Fitness Road. J.C. Engineering's not here, right?
That's right, and that's been withheld until the, apparently until the decision is made on a special permit.
And I don't think we're gonna get on that tonight. Establish security for Patterson Brook.
The engineer from GAF Engineering had asked for a continuance of that. Postponed it until later meeting. So, next meeting, we'll bring it up again.
I guess we're all the way down to any other business articles, zoning articles for spring town meeting? I think that's what Mr. Swanson's waiting for, right?
I have some, um, I have some handouts here. This is about asking the town to endorse the master plan. I just wanted, I'm not sure if we can vote for not on this, but I would like very much to. Did you like that?
It will. It is now. This is the, this is a town meeting article for a referendum, asking the town to, to see if the town will vote to accept the following resolution to endorse the 2020 master plan. And what I did, a little background here, I talked to several people about how to go about this, given that the planning board is the approval authority, but we want to go to town meeting, and we want to share with them what we're doing, and make sure everyone is aware, and give them a chance to vote, have a say on this. So Attorney Bowen suggested that we do a resolution. And what you see on the indented part that starts whereas, that's the beginning of the resolution, and it ends at the bottom paragraph there that starts with now therefore. Attorney Bowen has looked at this, the town moderator has looked at this, giving me advice as to how to make sure that what I submit to be in the warrant is legal, accurate, and appropriately written. And this is how it's supposed to be written. You have to describe the warrant article itself, and what you want to do, and that is to see if the town will vote to accept it. And then you have to have a motion that says, "I move that the town vote to support the following resolution," and that's the exact same text. Then there's an explanation paragraph that I got some help putting together. This is on the, I have submitted this to the Board of Selectmen, and it will be discussed at tomorrow night's meeting of the Board of Selectmen if we approve this as a planning board tonight. Tomorrow, and the reason that's important is tomorrow night's the last night for the spring town meeting warrant. They have to close it tomorrow. February 11th is the deadline, and we can get it on the normal town meeting warrant if we're comfortable moving forward with this. Before I go any further, part of this plan also has been suggested to me, and when talking about it, and I agree with it wholeheartedly, is that we hold a workshop before town meeting. We advertise it on social media, in the town papers and whatnot, and have a session in a room like this or someplace where we go, where we present the master plan. And I went, it would be, I'd be happy to do it if you all want me to, but I would think it would be very similar to the presentation I put together when we went through each of the mission statements and the vision plans and all the, all the specific goals. It's about 50 pages that we could go through. And also, it's been suggested that the summary sheets that I have, it's a four-page sheet of all the 52 goals, that that'd be a handout at town meeting. And I think all those are good ideas, and I'm happy to do them. But we gotta get on the warrant. Now, all that said, if we don't make it tomorrow night, we can get on the special town meeting warrant.
If there is a special.
If there is a special town meeting. Special town meeting has different criteria and different timelines and different deadlines for getting things on. And it's something that we could obviously do. Personally, I find it a little uncomfortable using that as a backdoor way, and it's perfectly legal and fine, I just don't like it. I'd really like to be on the normal warrant.
Yeah, I agree.
So, um, so the plan would be this. We'd have an open house where we could go through every goal, every vision statement, every mission statement in detail with whoever wanted to come to it. We would have a four-page handout of all the goals, or all the goals and strategies of the master plan at town meeting. And on the last page of this would be, and this is not locked in concrete, this would just be six slides that we would show at town meeting, explaining what we're doing. And you've seen all this data before in other stuff I put together. So, um, that's the plan I've come up with to share with you guys tonight, and I don't know if we can move on. Do we have, do we have a forum?
The chairman has said we have a forum.
Your vote tonight, so. I said your vote tonight.
Okay.
Because we have three people here who are all set.
So, anybody have any questions on what we're doing here?
The only question I would have is, are you gonna present it at town meeting?
I will, I'll be happy to.
Well, I think it would make sense. I mean, with all the work that you've put into it and the passion that you've shown for it. Well, it doesn't make any sense for, you know, if George presents it, he may know the material to a, to a point, but I don't think he's gonna, I don't think the passion for what needs to be done for the town through this master plan is gonna come through.
Something might get lost in the translation, since you're the creator of the document.
Yeah, the curator.
Okay.
That would be my only question is...
Charlie, you got any comment?
I have a question. Is the adoption of a resolution the same as the town meeting saying, "This is the Bible by which we will adopt all of our regulations going forward until such time it's amended"? Or is it just a, yeah, it's sort of like that idea? Which is it?
It's an endorsement.
Does that have the effect of law to whereby Planning Board, or the ZBA, or the Board of Health, or Conservation Commission could use that as a backup document that says, "In accordance with the..."
The answer is yes.
The document that we, it does?
The answer is yes, because the adoption has already occurred with the, with the Planning Board approving the master plan in accordance with state law, and the master plan was filed with the D H C D, the state as well, too. So that is the official document that can be used as a master plan for the town.
Okay. Then I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
I'll contend a motion.
I'll make, I make a motion then that we move forward with this town meeting article submission for me to take it to the Board of Selectmen tomorrow night, and asking them to include it in the warrant for the spring 2020 town meeting with the plan to do a public workshop probably in March prior to the town meeting, and with a four-page handout of the goals and strategies of the master plan at the town meeting itself, with six slides to be presented at the town meeting that I'll, that I'll present.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote 3-0.
Wonderful thing.
Thank you, Mr.
Michael, there's one thing that's hanging a little bit here, and maybe this is off topic, but we had a fair amount of discussion on the rules and regulations a while back, and I don't know that you were waiting on me on a couple of things, maybe, that we haven't really discussed. So if we could, I'd like to put that on the agenda so that we can get that back before the board and get it cleaned up. I know I've got a lot of sketches that would go in the appendix, Ken, and drawings.
I think that's what we're waiting on, yeah.
It's gonna take me a while to do that, because it's in PDF format, and I have to go back and change my CAD drawings to take out certain things and insert other things in it.
How about we do this in two parts, then?
Okay.
Why don't we hold a hearing on the rules and regulations and have a second hearing in process when the detail sheets are ready?
Okay.
So we can, we can modify the rules and regulations.
There is, there is one piece of language that we will have to discuss, and it has to do with our four main plans and, and the three criteria for a four main plan and stuff like that. I think we need to talk about that a little more.
Yeah.
Having put in some effort into thinking about it and looking at possible ideas.
So do you, do you, do you think we should hold a hearing and go over the options that are available? Or do you want to wait?
I think...
Kind of fully developed.
I think it'd be best, from what I know is in there now, that we just go over it one last time to be sure everybody's comfortable with it. And if we are, then it could be published for a public hearing. But at the same time, if what we're saying is true, that the master plan has now been or will be adopted by its virtue of having been submitted to various agencies, I think another thing to go in there would be that in accordance with the overall guidance of the master plan, these regulations are adopted, in addition to chapter 41 and so forth. So, just something to think about, and if we could get that on the agenda in the next, I don't know what the schedule is, maybe after Emmanuel comes back.
I was just gonna say, he's not coming back for a month.
Yeah, I think he'd be back the first meeting in March.
So do it in March?
Yeah.
So we have...
He definitely should be here for that.
Yeah.
March 9th is the first meeting, and it's a full moon as well, too.
It's not good.
I thought the full moon was out now. Another one in March?
It is at my house.
Yeah.
So, March 9th is tentatively set a date for a workshop. Did you receive the drafts of the articles for town meeting on the zoning? The definition of multifamily dwelling, the signs, Article 11, and the FEMA flood insurance rate map articles?
Are they, are those something we're supposed to have?
You, you will have them, yes. Because they were accepted by the, by the Board of Selectmen for...
When did they accept that?
The warrant, last Tuesday.
Okay, that stuff we seen, it was two weeks ago. There was discussion briefly about, Charlie, don't they have to have a public hearing on the FEMA map before it gets submitted?
I can't tell you specifically, Michael.
Well, this, maybe I can clarify this. This was, the changes that were made were based on applications that people made to certify their, their elevation of their building in relation to the floodplain. And those are all map changes that get included. So what we have for the list from the, from FEMA is a list of all those notices where flood hazard elevation determinations were made on a, on a property.
This is the paperwork we had at the last...
And it didn't make any sense to us last week.
So what this, what this amounts to then is basically map amendments?
Correct.
Can I, can I?
Which an individual can do and request.
Can I throw some stick in the spokes, too?
Go ahead, I'm good at this.
I am good at it, I'm very good at it. So, yes, they made changes to the maps, FEMA did, but the question that we, I believe, just my interpretation of this, is prior to July 2022 of 2020, our communities required as continued, as a condition of continued eligibility in the flood insurance program to adopt or show evidence of adoption of floodplain management regulations that meet the standards of paragraphs of the NFIP regulations. And it doesn't say that we're accepting the maps. The maps are there, the maps can be contested and negotiated with FEMA all they want, and they've updated the maps at the base of that. But we're being asked, as I read it, to say that we adopt to their regulations. So this is their regulation document, and, and I went through it to figure out what it is that we have to do, and it, and it is regulations, and it's, to your point, it's a building inspector question.
Well, it's more than that.
But if I, just let me finish my thought, that as I read this, it's saying, "Mr. Building Inspector, when you go out and do an inspection and you have floodplain, for flood zone or floodplain issues to consider, do you follow the regulations that FEMA has outlined in terms of making your determinations as to what they can and can't do?" And it was a, it's a yes/no question, is how I look at it, so. I don't get it.
I'm not sure I understand what you mean, it's a yes/no question, because we already have regulations in our zoning on floodplain management, and it's in the overlay district regulations.
And do the...
And those are, those have been reviewed, and, and they're also part of the amendment of zoning this time around, because there's a conflict with the building code in the way it's written right now. So...
So, so do our floodplain management regulations meet the standards of paragraph 60 dot 3 D and E of the NFIP regulations?
They will after this amendment.
Yes or no? That's what FEMA is asking us, is how I read it. That's just...
And I, and I thought two weeks ago, because I got a big question mark on my paper here, that we wanted the building inspector, someone to come in and explain to us, because we're all...
Charlie, you...
I think, well, Ken has used a very important word here when he's mentioned map amendments, because anyone can request a map amendment. For example, when I was in active practice, many people would go out and ask me to do a flood certification for their property. One in particular I can think of was down at Ames Island. And the map shows that the entire Ames Island is in a floodplain elevation equal to the Agua Mill Pond elevation. When you drive in there, you can go up a hill. So an individual on his property can request a map amendment to have his property taken out of a floodplain if you can prove by elevation that it's not in the floodplain. By what Ken is saying, it indicates to me that they have adjusted the maps based on a series of things that have come to them. So they're asking you to simply accept these as the new maps with these adjustments that have been made. Doesn't sound to me like it's a wholesale adjustment of the floodplain throughout the town.
Correct.
I agree.
So with, with the simple adoption of the new maps and the regulations which had been in effect since, what, 1970 somewhat, when they were first adopted?
It's been a while.
The regulations are there, and you go by whatever the maps show, and if they've made corrections to the maps, all you're doing is updating the map section. That's what it sounds like to me, based on what you said.
That's correct.
I, I agree with that.
So I don't think it's any big deal to say, "Yes, we approve it." You should.
Yeah, because it'll make sure that people get their flood insurance.
Or not. Or they won't need it. Or they won't need it. Yeah.
I think they'd rather have not needing it.
Not needed, yeah.
So this, but this has to go to town meeting?
Yeah, because that's to be in the zoning bylaws.
If there's a date change on the maps, too, you want that to be reflected, that it reflects the most recent maps, whichever they may be.
Well, this is gonna be a beauty to explain, huh? At town meeting, I mean.
And you're gonna explain it, right?
No. No, I mean, this is, floods, you know, floods...
I know, it's a very sensitive issue.
Flood insurance is very sensitive.
It's expensive, and it is costly, and to a lot of, a lot of people that...
Everybody angst.
But to Charlie's point, though, the message needs to be FEMA has updated their maps based on their latest data and based on negotiated challenges to their maps that they've settled on. We're updating our bylaws to match these maps and their regulations. This is something that we have to do to keep you in the flood insurance program. If you're not happy with the maps, this is the process that you go through to challenge them.
Well, yes, if, if they were doing wholesale changes to the maps, I think that would be, but it's important, I think, if, if the documentation is correct, and what I'm assuming the documentation is, that certain individuals requested changes for their individual properties. It isn't that they've made wholesale changes throughout the town.
They did though, two years ago, didn't they?
I don't know. I don't know when they did, or us.
In my own case, the lines moved.
There have been, in years past, adjustments to the maps, where the elevation 14 and 15 has been changed, they've changed velocity zones, and that's a wholesale change. We're not talking about that here. This is, you can request a letter of map amendment from, from the FEMA people. There's an application process you go through, you submit it to your local FEMA office, and they review the application, and if they agree with it, they send a letter back to the owner saying, "Yes, we agree with your assertion that it's not in the floodzone," or "It's in floodzone 17 instead of 15," or 15 versus 17 VE, or whatever it is. If that can be verified, I think the explanation would be fairly simple.
But we do this every year, Ken?
No, we do not. They don't amend their maps every year.
When's the last time you saw us do this, or have you been part of that, part of this before?
Last time was back in 14, I think.
That was terrible.
That was really controversial, all over the, all over the United States, all over the coast.
They had hearings of different towns, Miami.
Yeah, and that's, I believe that's when they went through and they modified the entire set of maps.
That's the one I'm talking about.
That's, that's entirely different, I believe, than, than what this is talking about.
Correct.
Well, I think before somebody goes and explains it on a town meeting floor, they would have their ducks in a row, because there's gonna be a lot of people there with a lot of questions.
We gotta explain this real clear.
Yeah.
We might want to think about doing something ahead of time, too.
See, we're lucky, we live in West Williams, we don't have that problem. Shouldn't I say we don't care?
I'm in the zone. In the zone.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have a test run when we go to the public hearing on this on the 24th of this month.
Ken, can we have a request for the building inspector to be here?
Yeah.
His input should, should help a little bit. Charlie?
I would think so. It'd be good to have that verification, then the explanation on town meeting floor can be relatively simple.
It's on the same page, yeah.
Are you gonna hold public hearings on the 24th for the other articles as well, Ken?
Yes, all, all three articles are on the 24th.
Okay.
Guess someone is?
Just, just to give the update to the board, I don't know, Mike, you might have gone by Aspen Dental tonight on your way down.
I went by the other day.
Did you see the fence?
What happened?
The construction fence, the wind boot down over the weekend.
Oh, really?
Really put it back up?
Well, I asked the supervisor for the contractor, site contractor, just before I came into the meeting. I says, "How come that fence is still down?" I says, "Laying right out at the edge of the pavement on Carmar highway."
Yes, sir.
The entire length, practically. So I said, "Well, two laborers will be on the site tomorrow morning to pick it back up."
The backside's knocked down, too, and the Walmart side.
Well, it could have been, the wind was blowing across there pretty stiff.
Did they...
I'm surprised they didn't pick it up before now, because the entire site's wide open.
Did they make those corrections that you...
No. They backfilled the entire system.
I noticed they had...
They compacted, they compacted a little triangle that'll be underneath the parking adjacent to Aspen Dental, up against the non-compacted bank of the rest of the system. And that's where it's been set. I was under the impression that the engineer was going to issue a change order to the contractor so he could compact the rest of it, but I haven't seen any change order, and I, I haven't seen the contractor there to do a lot of work the last several days. It's an issue. Shouldn't be allowed to just go unnoticed, because there's rest of the parking area for the potential site at the corner.
Right.
It depends on compacted soil.
So, so maybe it's gonna be somebody else's problem, basically.
Yes.
Whose problem is it here?
Their problem.
Is it ours, or the building inspectors, or...
It's...
No, not the inspector.
I say, I say it's here, it's responsible here.
Under the special permit, you're the enforcing board on this one. You have to take charge of that.
All I can do is what I did and report the circumstances, and the engineer said that he agreed with it, and that he was going to issue a change order so that they'd go back and compact it, but they just kept on backfilling, so the whole thing is done now. So in order to compact it properly, they'd have to excavate out the whole field, about five feet deep.
So my gut says, okay, let's go make them do it.
Right.
Yeah.
That would be my opinion.
You can, you can hold up any action, I believe, on the special permit, unless they do.
Isn't this the same company that's coming back before us, looking for a change to the special permit for another store?
Yep.
Same engineer for overall, not, this is a contractor for Aspen Dental.
Right, but if it's the same engineer and he can adhere to the set of instructions to be in, wouldn't that...
I don't know who is responsible for setting the specifications for the contractor to work. That would be Aspen Dental. So our, our action is against the property owner that is not following the standards of the town for construction.
Not only that, it's right in the plans, too, Ken.
On the compaction.
There are compaction specifications for the entire system on the plan.
And just to be crystal clear, at the same time you told us of this, you told them this.
Oh, I told them before I ever wrote to you, as I, I talked with the contractor on site.
And...
And I was told that his contract only said, "Compact the portion that's under our paving that we're doing for Aspen Dental." He says, "Unless they're gonna issue me a change order, I'm just gonna backfill it," which is what he did. The problem is that Aspen Dental gave a contract out on plans that are not the same plans as what you approved, had their own set made up, which showed different changes to the site. That was brought up by letter previously when I first noticed it, because when I asked them to see the plan and make sure that I was looking at the same plan for date, they showed me plans that had different numbers and different details. So we came in, and Ken and I talked about it with the engineer and with the representatives of the whole thing, and they agreed that they would come back with documentation for phasing, which they've never done, as well as these other things, so...
Cease and desist, is that what we tell them?
Well, what we do is we go, you as a board authorize me to go to the building commissioner and act, cease and desist, or, or some order, I don't know exactly what it would be, to get a correction of the, of the project.
So we need to make, we need to do that tonight.
So Aspen Dental's dictating the whole site, the site plan on that?
Just their portion of it, Mike.
Just, the problem is, it's just their portion.
Yeah. They're doing, they're doing certain things that are outside the immediate vicinity of their building, because that drainage area that's next to the secondary access to Route 28, that had to be built, because they've got pipe and asphalt that goes there. They've also got a drainage area that is between the Walmart parking and the front, what they're calling the front of their building, or, no, the rear of the building, which hasn't been excavated and prepared to receive runoff water yet. So that was the next step that had to be done. So they've selected certain things that will deal just with the Aspen Dental and are basically ignoring everything else on the site. So it's, it's made it difficult in some reasons, in some ways, yeah.
So Charlie, is this something that you need to work with David on to, to do, for the message that's gonna be delivered to them?
No, I don't think it should come through me.
Agreed, it comes from him.
Well, it comes to him by you, because you're, you're the ones who authored the special permit, and you control the special permit.
We need to get him educated on why we're doing this.
He needs to know the basis for it.
Right.
Right.
And I think you're the expert, I'm asking, can you have that conversation with him?
I, I think it would be...
Depends on what's involved in the, in the building permit.
I would say that it would make more sense, I would rather take a different tack, let me put it that way.
Fine.
I would rather have the engineer come back in here and explain how they're gonna rectify that situation, because it doesn't make any difference, really, what the building inspector says, it's got to be rectified. And we know that they want to come in for a modification of the special permit. So it would seem to me that a little back and forth discussion... So it would seem to me that a little back and forth discussion as to how their intent on resolving that would be a good way to do it. And if they bark at it, then you can always go to the building inspector and say you're in violation.
So we better get this button here in two weeks?
Well, the hearing is coming up in two weeks.
In two weeks. So he'd have to.
For Starbucks?
Starbucks, yeah.
That's coming up in two weeks?
I saw the notice in the paper yesterday, yesterday or the day before.
I assume they're not making any changes in the plans. Going to go with the same plan and, because there's been nothing filed as they can? Have they filed a different plan?
No, not that I'm aware of.
So they're going to go with the same plan and try and convince you that it's okay to have an open window there and a drive-up window for a coffee place? It's been approved.
Different plan.
Essentially, a variance of sorts was approved by the ZBA about a month ago to allow it. But they didn't present any other plans at all. So I don't know where that sits with them.
That sounds like something the Board of Selectmen approved. That's the kind of work they do. I'm sorry, Jim.
I got prong shoulders.
So we need some action right away or not, Ken?
Yeah, I think, I think Charlie's right. We have these guys. We do have control on the, on the project still, you know, under the special permit and the plan that was approved by the planning board.
I would think that it would be in their best interest to correct the problem earlier than later. Because as, as work goes on, it's just going to be correcting it that much time.
Because what will happen is they, if this, if this works the way it should, we should be able to deny a CO on the project until the corrections are made.
That's what I'm saying. It's easier to correct it now if they keep forging ahead and.
They're going to get to a point, you're going to have your back against the wall. It's going to be, it's going to be a nasty situation.
At that point, they're going to ask us to forgive this.
Don't remember too that Aspen Dental was only one portion. It's, it's for the sake of argument, one-third of the whole special permit. So how you handle a CO for one-third of the special permit, I don't know unless you tackle it with a modification somehow, which you'll have to do in two weeks anyway. But I'm not sure how you handle it because the paving hasn't been completed. They did a spot of paving here, a spot of paving here, a spot of paving there. Landscaping isn't finished, the drainage isn't done, even if the only thing you were going to do for was Aspen Dental. It's not complete yet.
I think it might be appropriate if I get the authorization to talk to town council about enforcement of this and what's the best line?
What's the best approach?
Yeah.
When's the last time you talked to anyone on site, Charlie?
About quarter to six tonight.
You talked to the contractor?
The site superintendent for this, yeah.
For the contractor, not, not for.
Welch Construction. Welch Construction is the one who's taking care of the site.
And, and he's working against the plans that he has, and he thinks accurately.
There are plans that were given to Welch Construction by High Point for use on the Aspen project, Aspen Dental project.
They're not the ones that.
They're not the same plans that were approved by this board.
So, yeah, we, we got to talk to High Point, right?
Well, I've already done that. I copied them with the letter that I wrote to you and to Ken.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah. And in, in the response, he said that it was accurate, that it should have been done differently, that he was going to issue a change order.
He agrees that there's a problem.
So you think we need to bounce this off Ballen to get a, to get a proper course of action?
Correct.
I move that we, that we authorize Ken to talk to town council as soon as possible to help us come up with the best way to communicate the issue around Aspen Dental.
Second. Any discussion?
Ballin's favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Done deal.
Thanks, Charlie. I got nothing else.
Well, they moved all the material out of there. All that topside all disappeared. Well, a good part of it. Got a big mountain of it, overnight it disappeared.
Yeah.
That was black gold.
Well, they've been moving a lot of stuff around and.
And when I first seen that big pile of sand, I says, the bog on us must be twitching. There was some good, good bog sand.
Well, this is good material. I have no, I have no problem with the material. It's just that you don't just push it in a hole that deep and not compact it.
Well, you do if you want to have a.
Well, yeah, I, I don't know. We'll see.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
If you hold it.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn, in second and all in favor?
Aye.